SFUSD will provide closed captioning and American Sign Language ASL interpreter services throughout today's board meeting. Live transcription can be found here Attendees who wish to provide public comment to the board and would like an ASL interpreter can use the Q&amp;A box in the Zoom app to type their name or handle and list the item or items on the agenda they would like to comment on. The attendee will need to have a functioning camera in order to communicate with the interpreter and the board. When it is the attendee's opportunity to provide comment, the Zoom host will promote the attendee to panelists and enable the attendee's video. Translation, go ahead, please.
Thank you. SFUSD is offering interpretation services in Spanish and Cantonese. If you need interpretation, please dial the following phone number. After dialing, please introduce the PIN number. This message will be repeated in Spanish and Cantonese. Buenos tardes, el Distrito Escuela Única de San Francisco ofrece servicios de interpretación en el idioma español. Si desea interpretación por medio de Google Meet, por favor marque el siguiente número telefónico seguido de la clave de acceso. 1 3 1 9 3 8 2 9 6 7 6. Por favor, digite la clave 6 6 5 9 9 6 9 7 6, seguido de la tecla numeral. Gracias. Cantonese interpreter, please. Thank you.
电话号码是1 4 8 4 8 5 4 3 3 2 8。然后请输入密码7 2 1 6 0 9 8 9 5 井字。多谢你。Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our translation services. Thank you so much. Like to reconvene. User error, that's what it is. Thank you, everyone. I'd like to reconvene to open session. The school board will be extending or reconvening in closed session after our open session. So at this time, we'll have, we'll continue the closed session business. And with this evening, we will go into opening items. Do you want to note that unfortunately tonight, there is no childcare for this evening? Opening items for land acknowledgement. We, the San Francisco Board of Education, acknowledge that we are on the unceded ancestral homeland of the Ramatashaloni, who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. As the indigenous stewards of this land and in accordance with their traditions, the Ramatashaloni have never ceded, lost, nor forgotten their responsibilities as the caretakers of this place, as well as for all peoples who reside in their traditional territory. As guests, we recognize that we benefit from living and working on their traditional homeland. We wish to pay our respects by acknowledging the ancestors, elders, and relatives of the Ramatash community and by affirming their sovereign rights as first peoples. This time, I'd like to move into the approval of board minutes. Regular board meeting of August 9, 2022, and August 23, 2022. Do a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any edits or corrections? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Take your president, Lam. Student delegate Hansen?
Yes.
Student delegate Canosta?
Here.
Commissioner Alexander?
Here.
It's okay.
Voting. Sorry.
Yes. Yes. All right.
I followed your lead too, Sarah.
Yes is noted. Vice President Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Chu? Commissioner Matamidi?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward?
Yes.
President Lam?
Yes.
Success.
Great, thank you. And just this evening, I'm really excited about the actions that we'll be taking tonight. It's been a culmination of governance work by our ad hoc committee, as well as the continued process as this board is pivoting and strengthening its practices of governance for SFUSD. With that, I'd like to turn it to Dr. Wayne for the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, President Lam. Good evening, everyone. And let's see. So if you go to the next slide, I just want to share as I've been, you know, in the district, you heard me talk about listening and learning a lot, but also just want to be out in our schools and see what's happening. And so I've been visiting schools, and sometimes there's scheduled visits, and other times I just try to stop by a school to see how things are going. And so those are always fun experiences, and I learn a lot about the district and what's happening in our schools, and I learn a lot just about my own education. Like I learned a new trick around the math facts, the multiplying nines, that if you're interested, I can share with you after the meeting. It's pretty cool. And so, you know, looking forward to getting out and visiting schools and getting to know, you know, all of our schools throughout the district. If you go to the next slide, just as I'm out and about and seeing, you know, seeing what's happening in our schools, there's just so many wonderful programs that we have in San Francisco Unified, and so many opportunities for our students. And we were able to celebrate our ability to provide college and career readiness opportunities and doing that through internships and through dual enrollment. And so we had an event with Supervisor Marr, and the board members came out to recognize these programs at Lincoln High School. And, you know, it's really, you know, the college and career readiness team delivers programs that provide students from under-resourced community with points of entry and opportunities to explore interest in a real-world setting. And I mean, that's what it's about, right? And this is a popular program. Our demand for the early college internship program exceeded capacity with over 1,900 applicants this year, serving 752 students in this past summer. And so we want to, you know, expand these opportunities for our students. I'll be actually joining the Chamber of Commerce, and this will be one of the points we can, we will highlight how businesses can support our schools by providing internship opportunities for our students. That's a bright spot. We do have our challenges as I'm visiting schools. We're tracking enrollment, and, you know, we projected an enrollment decline, you know, but it's hard to see the empty classrooms and empty seats in our schools. And it means as we deal with our staffing challenges of hiring staff, we're needing to make some tough decisions about how to ensure that all of our students have, you know, have a teacher in front of them. And so we know as we're going through that process, it might impact the school community, and that's, you know, really want to try to minimize any impact on our students and school communities and individual communities while making decisions collectively as a district that supports all of our students. So we're working through that now, and we'll keep open lines of communication. And that's been one challenge area. And if you go to the next slide, I guess the slide after that. You know, Empower SF has been an ongoing challenge. But, you know, I do want to share the progress we've made, as well as our efforts to improve. And, you know, at the end of my first month in July, I got to really see the impact of our system not being stabilized yet when seeing our early education teachers, you know, not getting paid correctly, sometimes not getting paid at all, and how it impacted their lives. And it's just, you know, it's not okay for us as a district to not pay our employees who are working incredibly hard on behalf of our, of our students. At the same time, I, you know, we're making progress. I know it doesn't feel fast enough, and I know we weren't going to have all the issues resolved by August, and we're not going to have them resolved yet by September, October. But we can take steps to make sure that people are paid when they're supposed to be paid, even if it's not through the typical route. And so this past month, we focused on a more stable start to the school by particularly addressing pay for our newly hired educators and employees who moved into new roles and locations. That could impact their first paycheck when they receive it in August. And so this year, we really, you know, work on making sure that they were cleared to work and were entered in the system. And as importantly, if they were not, that we streamline our process to provide relief for employees so that even if they weren't in our system, we still got them a check as quickly as possible through an off-cycle or an alternative payment. And so, you know, we had about 5,000 monthly paid, employees are paid monthly, and there were about 3.5% of them who needed to be paid through an off-cycle alternative check, payment. We did over 70 alternative payment checks for payday so to make sure that everybody on payday was getting what they needed. And then we'll do the work to reconcile it, but it's really important that we're doing that. And so we know there's issues that need to be addressed. You know, and again, I know progress doesn't feel like it's moving fast enough. And, and that's what I see as well. So we're going to be taking, you know, some big steps to get in the capacity we need and the expertise we need to improve the situation. So just for the Board of Education and public to know, we're working on that, and we'll likely be asking for a special meeting next week so we can bring in those resources to address this, these issues. And so I know that's, you know, an issue we have to focus on. If you go to my next slide, you know, I shared my priorities, you know, both to address these urgent issues, but also to be listening and learning. And so I'm going out and doing some town halls. I'm excited to be out in the community and out in our schools. And if you go to the next slide, you'll see this is where, where, where we'll be having them. And there'll be four community events to, for me to share about the 117-day entry plan, but really just spend most of the time listening to the public. And we're prioritizing equity and accessibility. We're going to have two of the events. The primary language will be in English, but one, the primary language will be in Spanish, and then the other in Chinese. And so welcome you to these events and looking forward to hearing from the community. And then appreciate that our Board of Education is going out as well as we go through this process to update our vision, values, and goals. We know how important it is that even though our board members are the elected representatives of the community, that they really have opportunities to hear from you all about the work that we're doing and how it is reflecting the community's values. It is reflecting the community's vision. So if you go to the next slide, you can see they're planning 12 citywide in-person events, as well as additional Zoom options with a focus on improvement in student outcomes through governance. And for those events, we are asking that you are RSVP, and we'll have childcare interpretation and refreshments. So, you know, again, a lot of opportunities to engage and a lot of work to do, but really excited when I go out to schools, what I see happening in our classrooms and the programs we're able to offer. So with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Wayne. Now I'd like to call upon our student delegates, student delegates Hansen and Canosta for your student delegate reports.
Hello, everyone. We hope that everybody is staying cool and safe in this heat.
Last week, we officially started student advisory council meetings, and we loved getting to meet everybody and introducing ourselves. And our representatives really appreciate Superintendent Wayne for coming to speak and ask questions of our representatives.
Full council meetings are open to the public and happen every other Monday from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. in person here at 555 Franklin.
We are still looking for students to fill representative and alternative spots from the following high schools: Balboa, Burton, Mission, Raul Wallenberg, Thurgood Marshall, June Jordan, San Francisco International, Academy, Independence, Downtown, I W Wells, and John O'Connell High School.
Students can apply at tinyurl.com/applySAC22. Thank you.
Thank you so much, student delegates. Now we will go into public comment for non-agenda items for this evening. Tonight, I believe we have 20 in person. So we'll allocate 40 minutes for public comment. And then I know that I would see, I see that there are multiple speakers for one item and just encourage speakers are one topic. I encourage speakers who are speaking on that same topic to collaborate and combine their comments so that the board can hear all viewpoints during our limited time. And please also note, the board accepts written public comments via email to boardoffice@sfusd.edu. And we, as board members, appreciate the constituent emails that we do receive on issues that you're raising from the public. And so at this time, all speaker cards for public comment must be submitted. Please note that the public comment is an opportunity for the board to hear from the community on matters within the board's jurisdiction. We ask that you refrain from using employee names and student names. And if you have a complaint about a district employee, you may submit it to the employee supervisor in accordance with district policy. As a reminder, board rules in California law do not allow us to respond to comments or attempt to answer questions during the public comment time. If appropriate, the superintendent will ask that staff follow up with speakers. So it's time I'd like to start with in-person public comment.
Thank you, President Lam. I'm going to start with the Sheridan group, but we're going to come up five at a time. A reminder to the public, you have one minute to speak. All right. Yanina Garcia? Luz Garcia? Ivanya Soto? Naomi Perlman? Please line up at the podium.
Eh,大家晚上好，我的名字是Yanina Garcia Capcha。我的孩子是乡村学生。她是一个支持我的孩子。我想让他们把老师还给我。所以我们被欺负了。我们想让我们孩子回到老师的身边。谢谢。
Thank you. Translation?
谢谢，Yanina。我的儿子是... 不，等一下。我要为女士翻译。等一下，女士，我要为女士翻译。我的名字是Yanina。And I personally have to tell you that I am the only person supporting my family. And the teacher that we lost at Sheridan was a person that was providing a lot of support for me and my family. She was a very good teacher for reading and writing for my son, who was struggling with these subjects. And she even provided support with transportation and ways to get food because I have no, no transportation or means to get things like that. And she was helping me with things like that. But mostly, she was a very good teacher for reading and writing. And a lot of our kids are struggling with these subjects. And us, the parents, are being affected by this. So I'm asking you, please bring that teacher back. Thank you. 好的，女士。继续说。
大家晚上好。我的名字是Luz。我是乡村的学生。我的孩子有I Ps 教学的所有人员都给了我很多的帮助他们需要很大的支持。对我的孩子们来说，这会很难。
Hello, my name is Luz, and I have two kids, two boys, and Sheridan. And I've been under a lot of stress knowing that one of the teachers that actually gives support, not only to my kids, but also giving support to me in a personal level, that she will be reassigned to a different school. And I think that that it's a mistake that the district will be doing because she is a great support for our community and for our children. And if we lose her, then we're going to be losing all this helps. Also, my, my children, they have I Ps, and they, they have been helped greatly. And this teacher has been helping them in reading and writing. And it is important for me that, and not, not just for me, but for the rest of the school, that she remains where she's at. Thank you.
大家晚上好。我的名字是伊芙尼娅。昨年已经有一个老师被调走了。谢谢。
Yeah. 我的名字是伊芙尼娅。我有一个女儿是乡村的。And I'm coming to ask you from my heart, from the bottom of my heart, please don't transfer the teachers. Please don't transfer this teacher. Last year, we already lost one teacher that was transferred. And this is really hard on the kids because the kids get used to their teachers, and then they're gone. And I can tell you, for example, my daughter has been here for two years. She's been receiving a lot of help, and she's very happy. She's getting a very good education. But if you keep transferring the teachers, the kids are going to suffer. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Naomi Perlman. I was planning on speaking with somebody else. Is it possible for her to come up? Or? Victoria Vazales, yes. So hello, we are Naomi Perlman. I'm the speech pathologist at Sheridan and Victoria Vazales. She's RSP. We're part of the special education team at Sheridan, and we want to talk about SFUSD's core values. We believe in the core values that SFUSD has taken on, and taking away teachers from Sheridan does not honor those core values. The first value, as we all know, is student-centered. This value states that SFUSD puts student needs first. Taking teachers away from Sheridan disrupts their learning and their sense of community. It is not a student-centered solution. Sheridan teachers are student-centered. However, forcing them into the overwhelming position of teaching two different grade levels and differentiating two different curricula while implementing IEP-mandated modifications across multiple grade levels is a bit much. We would love for someone to come out and model this successfully on a school-wide level for us. Losing more teachers will mean split-level grades for our whole community.
Value two is fearless. This value states that we persist through challenges. It is appropriate for us to ask our students to persist through the challenges of losing one teacher. Is it appropriate for two teachers, four teachers? It isn't right for SFUSD to create multiple challenges for our small community to persist through in such a short period of time.
Value number three, united. At Sheridan, we are definitely united community. We are united against the decisions that are being made without our input that will have a significant school-wide impact on our Sheridan students and community.
Value four, social justice. So since I've joined SFUSD, I've heard a lot of talk about equity. What I see is more along the lines of equality. Equity has to do with people, equality with numbers. My students and my families are humans and not numbers. And Sheridan deserves a population that, Sheridan serves a diverse population of students that includes some of our most vulnerable students. Due to our high retention of staff, we are not awarded the same protection as high-potential schools. This doesn't make sense, and our consistency benefits our students.
Thank you. Okay, next group. Karen Usher? Darcy Chan Blackburn? Gabrielle Melesa? Bonnie Makovic? Catherine Willard? Philip? Philip.
Thank you, Superintendent Wayne and school board members. My name is Karen Usher, and I have been teaching in San Francisco Unified for 30 years as a classroom teacher and currently as a literacy coach. The teacher shortage is real, and we fully realize what a huge challenge this is, and we appreciate the attempt at applying an equity lens. We feel, however, that Sheridan has missed out on this equity lens. If we were a tier-three school, we would still have the resources we need. Similarly, if we were a tier-one school with the PTC that can raise thousands of dollars annually to support school programs and positions, we would also likely have the resources to survive. We are in the terrible middle zone, left to sink or attempt to float alone. There is no way you could consider it equitable to the families at Sheridan to take away our... ...our reading intervention teacher who you heard our family speak of so eloquently. And the two teachers. Please don't think of us as numbers. Come visit our school and see why.
Good evening. My name's Darcy Chan Blackburn. I teach first grade at Sheridan. If a position is consolidated, at least five of our nine classrooms will have a change in teacher, and will, and a first kindergarten grade will split, will be created. Now, kindergarten and first are at a very different stages of development where they are learning foundational knowledge about literacy, math, and how to succeed at being at school. They need to have their separate grade levels. The process of consolidating positions treats our students and teachers like inanimate objects that can be moved around on a game board to satisfy the numbers. You're forgetting that you are impacting the lives of children and their families and educators who have already formed a relationship of trust. Our community is one that has been underserved historically, and we have a dedicated staff, and we've already lost two positions. All of our students will be seriously harmed by this further change. The choice to consolidate one of our teachers will create more trauma for our students and teachers, and in the long run, you will also lose more teachers who are frustrated with the empower and with being treated as though they are pawns. Please rethink this process and choose to instead respect the children in our schools and the people who educate them.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Gabrielle Melesa, and I'm a first-grade teacher at Sheridan Elementary School. I'm here to ask you to not consolidate another teacher from our school. Sheridan is a small school that serves one of the most marginalized populations in San Francisco. And the size of our school and staff allows our school community to feel like a family. We work diligently to build positive relationships and trust with the generations of families that we work with. It's devastating and traumatizing for our students to lose their familiar teachers who they have already connected with and formed a positive relationship with, especially after starting the school year and already establishing a warm and safe classroom community. At the start of the year, our reading intervention teacher was reassigned. She has now left the profession, leaving her position at our school vacant and... and the position that she was reassigned to went unfilled. This shows how removing teachers from Sheridan helps no one. None of our students and families deserve trauma of losing another trusted teacher from our school. They do not deserve the confusion of being put into new classes four weeks after the school year has already been in place. Please do what's best for our students at Sheridan, help them flourish and grow and build trust with them.
Hi, my name is Bonnie McAvick and I teach kindergarten at Sheridan. We are a small community school serving one of the most marginalized populations in the district. At Sheridan, we work hard to create a warm, caring environment for our students and families. We already conducted parent-teacher conferences with our families during the first few weeks of school in order to build trust. Our students are off to a great start this year because we've given them the time and support they need to build trust with their peers and teachers. Additionally, Sheridan has one of the lowest teacher turnover rates in the district. Everyone at the school knows each other. As teachers, we have the opportunity to teach students and their siblings and their cousins over the year, which allows us to get even closer with families. Every time a teacher is consolidated, it feels as though we're losing a family member. Many of our students have experienced trauma. They have a basic need for consistency and love. Our students are devastated that they lost their art if reading teacher earlier this year. Moving teachers from school to school impacts the students we serve. As a student-centered district, there must be another way to solve the teacher shortage problem. As recent recipients of community school funding, we at Sheridan were hopeful that our school would be recovering from the devastating effects of the pandemic.
Hello, my name is Catherine Willard and I teach third grade at Sheridan Elementary. Our school is a small, close-knit community that I was lucky enough to land at for my first job teaching. And it's been the reason that I have stayed in the district for what will now be my third-year teaching through online learning and the pandemic. At Sheridan, we have an amazingly strong and committed community that serves students who come from some of the most historically underserved populations. Despite the challenges of the recent years, we have been able to provide stable and positive spaces for our students to learn because of this community. Shuffling kids and teachers around after a month of forming trusted relationships within classrooms does not reflect our district's mission statement to provide access to high-quality teaching and learning to every student. This is not student-centered nor social justice-oriented as SFUSD claims to be. High-quality learning is completely dependent on strong relationships and trust. While I appreciate the shortage of teachers across the district, there must be a better way to solve this problem. Being reassigned mid-year after pouring my heart into this school and the relationships I have with my class would be unbearable and I would choose to resign. The decision to consolidate would not help anyone and hurt many. Please do not take another teacher away from our school and ultimately away from our district.
Hi, good afternoon, my name is Philip Onferstnerig. I'm a school social worker. This is my 16th year in SFUSD. I was wondering, can I present this to the superintendent? Can you give this to superintendent, please? This morning during pickup, we had all of our parents sign this beautiful billboard that I put together last night. I think it really stands to the statement that our parents really want you to understand, which is that we care tremendously about our school and we really want to save these teachers. I do have one question for the board and for the superintendent, what about the waitlist? I hear down at, whatever they're called, the acronym. There's a tremendously long waitlist and we're wondering why we haven't been sent students and why there's still students waiting to get into school. I'd like to ask the participants that are here in this meeting today, do you want SFUSD to take teachers away from Sheridan Elementary School?
No.
Do we want our reading support specialists back?
Yes.
Do we want our students to be negatively impacted by higher class sizes?
No.
Thank you very much. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Okay, I'll be calling the next group. Supriya Ray, Jordan Davis, Alana Merchant, Ashling Pranj, Rachel Klaus, and Chris Claus.
Good evening, everyone. This is Supriya Ray here. I'm here to talk about two things tonight. I quickly wanted to raise outdoor learning for your consideration again as an update. It's been more than 10 months since this board passed funding for outdoor learning. That money has not been spent, the applications have not, no one's ever been notified as far as I know, but what happened to any of the applications and there are over 60 schools who are waiting to hear something back. There isn't even a timeline still, despite multiple inquiries that I and others have made to the facilities department. This is really troubling and given that outdoor learning is safety and helping our district and kids recover, it is hard to see almost a year go by with no effort on this critical health and safety matter. Second thing I wanted to address is public comment and the process. I've been attending meetings for over two years now and I have noticed that certain people are allowed to talk much longer than others. And I want to note, this is not one or two sentences or a few seconds, but much longer. I raise that for your consideration. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Jordan Davis. My prior answer, she and her, give Sheridan their reading teacher back. And I can't speak for the social studies programs here at SFUSD, but I'm sure students learn about the First Amendment. In that spirit, they should also learn about the case of Dowd versus Los Angeles, where Judge Dean Pragerson said that all public meetings in the Ninth Circuit, which is California by the way, can't censor otherwise legal or on-topic public comment. I did not appreciate the staff for trying to lunge at me two weeks ago because I chose to express myself in the public forum and the censorship happening here. Pay your teachers, stop taking Sheridan's resources, save all schools, and you should resign for being racist. I yield my time, sounding machabi.
Good evening, my name is Rachel Klaus and I'm the teacher librarian at Roosevelt Middle School. I'm also the parent of a middle schooler at Roosevelt. In my 18 years of teaching in SFUSD, I have never felt as frustrated and insulted as I do now because so many of my colleagues at Roosevelt and around the district have been struggling for eight months now with paycheck issues. We have first-year teachers at our school who have still not received paychecks for the full-time work that they did in August. We have new mothers with their, on maternity leave who are spending hours and hours and hours trying to figure out how they're getting paid during their parental leave. It is outrageous that we are in this ninth month of empower and it's so dysfunctional. Everyone involved with the running and managing and overseeing of this district should prioritize right now the paying of all of the SFUSD school teachers.
Hi, my name is Ashlyn Crang and I'm the English department head at Roosevelt Middle School. After losing incredible staff members to consolidations last year and resigning to classes with more students than chairs, I thought things couldn't get any worse. We've had three teachers who are not paid still or who are not paid correctly. Of the 20 that we surveyed, 19 said they didn't know if they had been paid correctly or not. I've put in over six help tickets since February and I didn't hear back about any of them until this summer. Luckily, I think I've been paid correctly, but I still don't know and so many of us don't know. This job is hard enough and we should not be here a month into the school year stressing about whether we're being paid or not. I had a student come up to me on Friday as the bell rang and reminded me, asked me actually if I had been paid yet and asked me if I was in the union and what we were going to do to fix this. And this is an eighth grader with enough of his own drama to worry about. He's worrying about this either. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Alana Merchant and I'm also a teacher at Roosevelt Middle School. I'm the science department lead. And like my colleagues, I am frustrated and appalled that the issues with empower have not yet been fixed. As my colleague said, we have multiple teachers at our school site who have not yet been paid. None of us are sure if we're getting paid correctly. I personally am pretty sure my paycheck was not correct this past month and it was correct throughout the rest of the year, but we are losing teachers to this. A science teacher at my school who was fantastic and loved her job and loved the school chose to leave teaching altogether because of the frustrations largely around our paychecks and throughout the district. And frankly, as a seventh-year teacher, I have never thought about leaving. And with the past few months and the disrespect that it feels to have teachers not paid correctly and not understand our paychecks and know if we're being paid correctly, it makes me considering leaving and I love my school and I love my job and I do not want to leave my school, but it is beyond frustrating that this is still a problem. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Chris Claus, a special teacher at Washington High School. We desperately need a smart, specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and timely solution to the empower pay crisis. I hope that the supposed meeting next week will provide the solution. I do want to stop and thank the folks in payroll for finally getting two months' worth of paychecks to one of my colleagues. She was able to buy groceries and fill her gas tank for the first time in months. However, there are others at my site and across the district who are still missing pay and have unanswered help tickets. The longer it takes for the district to resolve pay issues, the more it costs in the long run, both financially and in staff retention. I'm begging you to resolve pay issues within 72 hours of their reporting. People need to be paid correctly and like the professionals we are. Also, please stop ripping supports away from students through consolidations and reassignments. Taking away support personnel and classroom teachers from schools like Sheridan is not in service of communities. It is not student-centered and it is not helping to retain qualified staff. Thank you.
That concludes in-person public comment.
Go to virtual public comment.
At this time, we will hear public comment for a total of, it's going to be 20 minutes? 20 minutes. Each speaker will have one minute to speak. Please raise your hand if you care to share your public comment. Can we please have that repeated in Spanish and Chinese?
Buenas tardes, por favor levante su mano si quiere agregar un comentario público. La duración es de 20 minutos, un minuto por cada persona. Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brené?
It's Bryn, actually. Thank you so much. I'm a parent at McKinley Elementary School. And as you've heard so eloquently already this evening, consolidation hurts not only individual schools, but the district as a whole. A vote for consolidation is a vote for instability. We've heard firsthand tonight that teachers have and will resign if faced with consolidation. It's not good for any school or for the district as a whole. Our kids have already suffered so much during the pandemic and this would only cause them to suffer further. And they are already suffering further from the consolidations already happened. Really don't need to make that worse. Please consider alternative options to address the staffing shortage. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Ari? Ari? Rebecca? Rebecca?
Hi, that was my son. Why don't I let them speak? Come here and read because they're having issues with their Chromebooks. Bring your papers, come here. It's my, it's working. Okay, go ahead.
I'm in fourth grade and I love my teacher and I don't understand. Please help us let to, to keep, let us keep our teacher. So we dissolve the best education too.
Go ahead.
Good evening, I am a fifth grader at Sheridan. Please don't take away any of our teachers. We need stability to learn and losing a teacher would hurt our school and education. Learning in a smaller class size has really helped me out. I will be sad to see my brother or any other kid lose their teacher or be forced into a new classroom after the year has already begun. I think this will make their school year more difficult. Thanks for listening to us.
And hello, I am the mother of a third and fifth grader at Sheridan. I was completely heartbroken to learn that the news of our beloved school might be forced to consolidate another classroom after the school year is well underway and after already losing one position last year and losing our reading coach this year. What the district is proposing will affect multiple grade levels at Sheridan. At a time our students, when reading and math scores have fallen nationwide due to the pandemic, now more than ever, our students require stability in the best environment to learn and thrive in, something that Sheridan excels at. Not the unethical and what feels to me like a targeted attack against our very youngest learners who potentially will be separated from their teachers and friends and forced into a new arrangement that hasn't been thought out just to accommodate the district. Our students have already formed bonds with their teacher. Please don't play shuffleboard with our classrooms. We are a family at Sheridan and consolidating another classroom and losing a teacher will devastate us all. Thank you.
Thank you. Faith?
Hi, my name is Lila Smith. I'm a parent at McKinley Elementary School. I have a first and third grader. I wrote to the board last week outlining a few of my many concerns about consolidation. But what I would like to focus on with this time is that moving teachers makes for unhappy teachers. Unhappy teachers are less likely to stay with the district, which leads to an even larger teacher shortage. This type of instability also creates unhappy families. Unhappy families look for ways to leave the district. When families leave the district, it decreases enrollment and funding. Whatever short-term solution consolidation potentially provides temporarily, it is not worth the large, long-term problems it exacerbates, especially given the timing. If consolidation needs to occur, it should happen after the school year ends and before the next begins. I urge you to vote against consolidation. This board has said that it is student-centered. I ask that you prove that and not cut me off.
Thank you. David?
Hi, my name is David Coe. This is my 18th year in the district. I'd like to direct folks to resources I put together regarding empower. The URL is tiny.cc/sfusdpayroll. Again, tiny.cc/sfusdpayroll. I put these together back in May after four months of empower to try to help my colleagues sort through the mess. Sadly, those resources are still relevant. I understand there's no opportunity for people to respond, but I have some rhetorical questions that I'd like us all to consider. First, how long without getting paid would you continue to work? Secondly, how much would you be underpaid before it's reasonable for you to stop working? Third, what is the process for us to receive interest for late payments? Because we've been told that for approximately eight months and have not received information about how to submit requests. What do I do when a ticket that I submitted two weeks ago hasn't received a response and likely won't for some period of time? Next, why is my deferred net payment not the calculated amount? Next, why is my retirement contribution not the correct amount? Please help us.
Thank you. Tom?
Hi, I'm a teacher and a parent in the district. I think it's outright crazy and silly that the paychecks are going on like this. And I don't hear anyone at the board. You say you're student-centered, but how can you be student-centered if you're also not teacher-centered and school staff-centered and not speaking up against us at every meeting and screaming and yelling about it? You don't have our backs if you don't. And that's sad. Another thing about the COVID thing from the superintendent saying that by the end of September, we're going to stop testing. So what does that mean? More students and more school staff are going to be out because we're not going to have access to that? This district's not even providing hand sanitizer anymore. That's not student-centered, that's not school staff-centered. So stop making these outrageous claims that you are when you do quite the opposite. Thank you.
Thank you. Charles?
Thank you. I call for an outside audit of the empower contract. Why is this incompetence allowed to persist? Who was enriched? Why was the contract written so poorly? Do you think employees will be loyal after this type of mistreatment? SFUSD can't recruit because they don't pay well relative to other districts. And simply put, they don't pay. Why must all employees be forensic accountants? This is going to kill teacher retention for years to come. At a certain point, this is abusive. Eventually, we will all have to walk away. Eventually, we will all have to walk away to pursue and preserve ourselves. I plan to retire, I plan to retire from SFUSD in 10 to 12 years, but not if it means continuing to fight for to be paid. Now, instead of focusing on the year, I am forced to consider an exit strategy. When do we put our students first? We did our part, and you failed at yours. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarita?
Hello, my name is Sarita Lavin, and I am a teacher at George Washington High School. I urge you to stop the consolidation of teachers in our schools and to actually spend the money where it matters, on properly compensating your staff and fully funding our schools. The Empower disaster has not been resolved over nine months later. I just discovered more pay issues in my check today in a paycheck workshop not put on by the payroll office but by my coworker. You must pay us with interest, period, or we strike. I also urge you to remove Ansu from the board. It is already embarrassingly racist that the board has continued to allow this, and I urge you to gain some perspective and empathy concerning these situations, which are ruining the lives and livelihoods of SFUSD staff. My student told me today, "I wanted to be a teacher when I was a kid, but now I see how they treat you, Ms. L," and I hope you think about that.
Thank you. H. Kelly?
Hi, my name is Hava Kelly. And I'm calling because I'd like to see an agenda item put on for Empower, for the teacher shortage, for consolidation, for all these various issues that are coming up. Instead of the public trying to figure out what's going on, perhaps it's best that the BOE and the district comes to us and fills in the gaps. We need information. We need to know what's going on so we can be better informed and so we can work in collaboration and partnership together as a community to resolve all of these enormous issues that are going on. This is heartbreaking. We need information. We need transparency. So please consider that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Alida, Alida?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Alida Fisher. I am honored to be a volunteer at Sheridan Elementary School, and I stand in solidarity with their calls for making their staff whole. Please do not consolidate from Sheridan. Sheridan is a small but mighty gem in the middle of Lakeview, OMI. And as you all likely know, 94112 is the zip code with the highest number of San Francisco Unified School District students in our city. How on earth can we be consolidating from this area where we have the highest percentage of students? Please, please, please. I've worked alongside many of these teachers who give above and beyond for their staff, for their students, and are the most collaborative, the most cooperative, the most student-centered folks that I have ever seen. Please do not take any more staff away from this already, already marginalized school. Thank you.
Britt?
Hello, I'm just wondering if you guys can show the public commenters who are speaking, because those on Zoom, we can't see.
I'm sorry, um, to the folks on Zoom, this evening, we unfortunately were not, the SFGov TV partners were not able to attend this meeting, and those are the ones who manage the cameras. So we only have just the basic view tonight. You won't see any focused views on any of the individual commissioners. So unfortunately, we'll be back up next week, but tonight, that's, it's gonna be that way. So you still have access to be able to listen to it, and, but that's unfortunately the way it is.
Thank you. President Lamb, that does conclude virtual public comment.
Thank you so much, and thank you to the public for providing, coming out and providing public comment this evening. This will conclude general public comment on non-agenda items. We will now shift to public comment and hear from SFUSD students who wish to speak on any matter. Students will have up to two minutes to speak unless otherwise indicated, and we'll dedicate 15 minutes for this general public comment period for students.
Thank you. Are there any students in the room who would care to speak this evening? Seeing none.
Please raise your hand if you are a student and you care to speak. Again, this is a reminder that this is a time for students to speak. Can we please have that repeated in Spanish and Chinese?
Buenas tardes, por favor levante su mano si desea añadir un comentario público. Este espacio está dedicado solamente a los estudiantes. Gracias.
Thank you. Micah?
Hi, um, my name is Micah, and I'm a senior at Lowell High School. And I wanted to talk a little bit about school breakfast and lunch. I'm kind of concerned about the amount of caloric value that high school students are getting, especially since it's the same amount that middle and elementary school students are getting. I have two younger siblings, one of whom was in, who's in elementary school, one of whom is in middle school, and they eat the same lunch as I do, and I'm a senior. For example, last Tuesday, I had breakfast, a bagel with cream cheese and an apple, which was school breakfast. And then for lunch, I had a hot dog and carrots for a total of, as accurately as I could find on the internet, according to Revolution Foods, that's about barely above 500 calories for two meals. And that's including eating the, you know, vegetable supplemental foods. Especially in high school, this is really not enough. And I'm lucky enough for my family can supplement my food. You know, I can bring food from home, or I can eat snacks, or I can eat a big dinner. But if I didn't have the resources to supplement my food intake, I would really be like malnutrition with the amount of calories that are provided, especially for high schoolers who are growing, especially like, you know, we obviously have variety and how much people need to eat. So I would consider the board to look into maybe letting high schoolers get more than one serving of possibly breakfast and/or lunch, just because some of these calorie counts are really low and not enough to learn on and to have your stomach not grumbling class on. But thank you so much and have a great night.
Thank you. That concludes our public comment from students.
Thank you. Thank you to our students for providing public comment this evening. We will now move to Agenda Item F, Consent Calendars. Do I have a motion and second on the consent calendar?
Second.
Thank you. And now I'd like to open for public comment on consent calendars. And members of the public may comment on any matter on the consent calendar, but members of the public shall not be permitted to sever agenda items for discussion.
There are no speaker cards for in-person.
Please raise your hand if you care to speak to anything on the consent calendar. Can we please have that repeated in Spanish and Chinese?
Por favor levante su mano si desea añadir un comentario público con relación al calendario. Gracias.
Seeing no virtual public comment for Item F.
Thank you. Any items removed or corrected by the superintendent?
Uh, yes, tonight, we are withdrawing F-13, Memorandum of Understanding the College of New Jersey, with the College of New Jersey, and Item 39, Contract Orders for Service Work Order and Modifications in Connection with the School Building Program, Authorization to Contract Environmental Consultant and Historical Resource Consultant Pools.
Thank you, Superintendent Wayne. Any items removed for first reading by the board? Any items severed by the board or superintendent for discussion or vote tonight? Seeing none. And Mr. Steele, if you can please repeat the withdrawn items before our roll call, please, on consent calendar.
Thank you, President Lamb. With being withdrawn tonight are F-13 and Item 39.
Thank you. Roll call vote.
Thank you. Student Delegate Hanson?
Yes.
Student Delegate Canosta?
Yes.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Vice President Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Shu? Commissioner Matamidi?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward?
Yes.
President Lamb?
Yes.
Success.
Thank you. Item G, Retroactive Contracts Consent Calendar. Again, board members may remove or sever items prior to vote. I'd like to get a motion and a second on retroactive contracts from the consent calendar, Items 2 through 6.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Members of the public may provide public comment on any matters on the retroactive items on the consent calendar. At this time, do we have a public comment?
None tonight.
Please raise your hand if you care to speak to any of the consent calendar items. I'm sorry, the retroactive contracts. And can we please have that repeated in Spanish and Chinese?
Buenas tardes, por favor levante su mano si desea añadir un comentario público. Gracias.
Thank you. Seeing no public comment.
Thank you. Any items withdrawn or corrected by the superintendent?
No.
Thank you. Any items removed for first reading by the board? Seeing none. Any items severed by the board or the superintendent for discussion or vote tonight? Seeing none. Mr. Steele, roll call vote on the retroactive contracts from consent calendar, please.
Student Delegate Hanson?
Yes.
Student Delegate Canosta?
Yes.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Vice President Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Shu? Commissioner Matamidi?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward?
Yes.
President Lamb?
Yes.
Success.
Thank you. Now moving to Agenda I, Proposals for Action, the Amendments to the Board Rules and Operating Procedures, 229-681. I'd like to ask for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. I'm gonna give an introduction to the work, and we will then have Chair Matamidi give a summary of the work. We will then open it up for public comment. And then we will take comment and discussion from board members, and it'll be structured round robin, up to 15 minutes of discussion. And then we will conclude with a roll call vote. So I just wanted to, again, as I opened this evening's board meeting, how excited I am for the action before the board tonight of amendments to the board rules and operating procedures, and really the rationale for this work when we started, after being part of a national convening with colleagues around the country, and the importance of this board focusing on governance and student outcomes, and that the school board's procedures and therefore its time, we were not spending it focused on student learning, and that recognized that need to change and pivot. Because when we're not focused on, when the board's not focused on students, neither is the district. And to change that, the board really took to its focus of needing to update its procedures. And so what has happened thus far, so far? In May, the full board and superintendent attended a national convening workshop, as I mentioned, to learn about how to focus on student outcomes. In June, the board created an ad hoc committee to draft a set of updated board procedures. In late July, the ad hoc committee met as an augmented committee so that all board members could be included to listen to community comment and discuss potential changes. In early August, the ad hoc committee met and heard community comments on the first rough draft updates. In mid-August, the ad hoc committee met again and heard from community comments on the second draft and provided its updates. And the last action of the ad hoc committee unanimously passed the draft updates with a recommendation for the full board to adopt them. And at this time, I'd like to ask Chair Matamidi to give us highlights and the summary of the work.
All right, thank you very much. So again, the purpose was to refocus the board on student priorities, fiscal responsibility, and sound leadership. The scope was to review our bylaws to improve our practices and how we spend our time to support the administration of our district and to prioritize our student success and the stability of the district. We know the focus needs to be on our kids, our schools, and building much-needed trust with our community. As President Lamb indicated, we met three times as an ad hoc committee for a total of over nine hours. We also publicly posted our materials and offered and reviewed public comment. We had robust discussion, and I'm so pleased tonight to bring this proposal forward to you with full recommendation from the committee. I wish to thank Vice President Bogus and Commissioner Sanchez for serving with me, and thank you to the rest of my colleagues for offering helpful feedback that informed the work that we bring forward today. We were facilitated by the Council of Great City Schools, which has been providing similar services to districts around the country. And so I just want to clarify that our job is to operate as a governance board to ensure that our superintendent is leading the district well. Our current procedures do not focus on student learning. That needs to change because when the board isn't focused on students, it makes it harder for the district to focus on students. And so to change that, we need to update our procedures. I also want to clarify some areas of confusion around the role of the board that has come up consistently. The board does not run the district. The only staff that reports directly to the board is the superintendent. The superintendent is hired to run the district and to create systems and leadership that will benefit our public education system, our students, our schools, our community. The board has no other direct staff. The fact that our board meetings have become the venue for the community to provide input indicates that we need to change. This governance effort and review of board rules is anchored in creating the structures and behaviors to ensure our district is connected to our community and to rebuild the much-needed trust. We need to be a district that operates in service of our students, families, educators, and our community at large. Our discussion in the ad hoc meetings made it clear that our district also needs to provide updated information about our schools, our enrollment systems, and have clear and understandable ways for our students, families, and educators to get information about our programs, services, resources, curriculum, and all the activities of our district. I've been a parent in this district for over a decade and have been trained that our system is not a system. It's a series of workarounds and personalities. Our systems need to change. This is not working. And most importantly, it's not working for our students. We don't, we need to focus on our clear student priorities and have a normal cadence where we review how our policies are working for our student success and for our schools and for our community. Those are the conversations we need to have. So the goals, the board's goal in bringing forward these board policy changes are to enable greater transparency into our work and to focus and clarify student priorities and outcomes. Some of the big changes are our draft agendas and materials will now be publicly available 12 days in advance. There will be opportunity for a record of question and response between the board and staff to be included in the final published agenda for public review and comment. There will be greater clarity around staff expectations for preparation of materials prior to being placed on the agenda. There will be greater transparency and opportunity for public input to staff, the board, and as a community. Board committees will have clear focus and deliverables that will directly inform our work with clear timelines, such as this ad hoc committee. Board behavior and expectations are more clearly defined, and student success and outcomes are to be at minimum 50% of our board focus at our meetings. Currently, we spend about 0 to 5% of our time each month on student outcomes and student success. By changing this, it will make it easier to identify, diagnose, and address longstanding issues. So there are a few areas- So there are a few areas that will need to be addressed going forward, but not, but did not fit into this initial scope of work. The first being public comment. The ad hoc committee requested a survey of other similarly sized districts' public comment structures. This was publicly shared and posted. However, we did not include any specific recommendations on our board policy beyond those required for compliance with the Brown Act. The second is board-created advisories. These board policies are not retroactive, and therefore, any current board-created advisory bodies remain unchanged. That said, we have heard loud and clear from many of our advisories about their frustration that their time, energy, and recommendations are not reflected in the board and district work. Thirdly, the district staff and systems reorientation. These board policies will require the district itself, under our superintendent's leadership, to reorient its behavior and priorities to support our student success and to ensure our district is led in a sustainable and responsible way for their benefit. Throughout this month, the superintendent is holding town halls. And the board similarly will be going out to the community both in person. This will further inform our priorities and our next steps to improve the way we conduct ourselves and our work so we can be in better service of our students. So I put forward these board policies tonight with optimism and practicality. And again, we move forward with positive recommendation from the committee. I do want to make one modification to the policies as posted, and after describing, I will make a motion to amend. At our last committee meeting, Vice President Bogus put forward a new concept to have board leadership nominated and elected over the course of two meetings. Because this was a new concept at our last ad hoc meeting, the rest of the board did not have an opportunity to weigh in on this. So since we met, I've personally thought of several instances why nomination and election may be preferred to happen in one meeting. As such, I would like to put forward the addition to section ninety-one-hundred on page sixteen to add, "The board, by two-thirds approval, may choose to nominate and elect board leadership in one meeting. Otherwise, it is done over two meetings with nomination at the first and vote at the second." So that includes my introduction of the item for discussion and my motion to amend, if others are amenable to such amendments. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chair Matamidi. And I just want to express my deepest gratitude for you to chairing the committee, to Commissioners Sanchez and Vice President Bogus, for all the work that went on in the committee. You were all diligent, focused, and fulfilled your charge as a committee. And really appreciate the heavy lifting and deep work that occurred just in a few months. And with that, I wanted to now open it up to, so we do have a motion on the floor and parliamentarian for our general counsel, I believe. Shall we now go into our round robin discussion before? To us, there's a motion. Public comment. Thank you. I always get too excited about the parliamentaries. I want to make sure I'm following process. So let's go ahead and open to public comment now. We will do in-person public comment as well as virtual. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Alexander.
Thank you, Jeff Lucas. Could I turn your mic on?
All right. My name's Jeff Lucas. I'm a parent in the district. Thank you, ad hoc committee, for your time and efforts. The proposed changes represent a big step towards more effective governance. One change that I noticed is particularly notable is the elimination of new board resolutions. By my count, there are some one hundred seventy unique active board resolutions. While well-intentioned, many of the resolutions are distractions. Thank you for making the changes to the board rules and procedures. They represent an important step.
Thank you. That's all for in-person public comment.
Please raise your hand if you care to give a public comment. Can we please have that repeated in Spanish and Chinese?
Buenas noches, por favor levanten sus manos y denle un comentario público. Gracias.
If anyone wants to add something to the meeting, please, 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 if you have anything to say, please, 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 thank you.
Thank you. Tom?
Hi. Yeah, I spoke earlier, but I, this is all talk again until you actually have the backs of students, school staff, not just teachers, school staff, and parents in the district. I'm a parent and teacher in the district. When you don't have agenda items like COVID testing ending in September on the agenda, when you don't have the power issues on the agenda, how can you say that this is better? We're not paying school staff what they're owed and what they deserve, just like any other job you would expect it, right? If it affected you personally as the board of ed, you might care more about it. So you say this is great. I don't see it until you actually have the backs of students, school staff, and parents by those very two things and other things that are really important. Thank you.
Thank you. Alita?
Hi, everyone. Thank you very much for this work. Our board must work in conjunction and in collaboration with families, educators, and other stakeholders. And you mentioned earlier that you heard from community in putting this together. When? Where? The CAC is meeting next week with a group of stakeholders. We're not exactly sure who, but it seems like we're going to be sharing priorities then. That's the only time that we've been reached out to as far as participating in community. The board has become the venue for parent complaint, for community complaint, because we have gutted all other opportunities for families to share their feedbacks and comments. The Office of Family Voice, for example. Gone. The Brown Act, the Brown Act is all about transparency and accountability. And that's what these board meetings are for. That's what the committee meetings are for. As our previous commenter said, if we want to be accountable, we've got to share information with families. Please, please, please do not gut our committees. Do not gut our ability to participate in this process.
Thank you. Michelle?
Michelle? Yes, sorry. I just got the message to unmute. Thank you. Michelle Jacques Maneges here, coordinator for the Parent Advisory Council to the Board of Ed. I would like to just add a plus one to Alita Fisher's comments about working in collaboration. And while greatly appreciating the work that the district and the board are doing to try to be very focused on student outcomes. And I know there's never enough time to do all the work. However, this work was done over the summer when our advisories don't meet because they don't, they only meet during the school year. And many of our staff, like myself, who support them, take that opportunity to step away from work to replenish ourselves in this work. And so we were not, again, directly reached out to, to my awareness and didn't have an opportunity to fully engage in this. And we have a lot of questions and a lot of wonderings about how this will be impacting our work, aside from a very vague message that said that there was going to be changes to the reporting schedule, which we've heard nothing else about. And I'm sorry, I'm going to take just another second. We have questions about when we will be able to have that heard, how this increase in advance for information will affect us and other things. So we look forward to further information and discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Hava?
Hi. So first, I am looking forward to the listening tours, as you say. It's a lot to unpack and to understand. And I don't feel fully informed to say one way or the other. But one thing I just want to comment on is, one thing that was just said is something along the lines of, for this to work, the district will have to pivot. And so I just want to highlight that, that that is crucial. The communication breakdowns is why families are coming to the BOE in part, and why educators are coming to the BOE and trying to address their concerns in that way. So, yeah, so I just want to highlight how important that is. There is a breakdown in this community, and there's divide. So I'm looking forward to the listening tours. I hope you extend it until everybody can feel informed, understand the process, and can collaborate. Thank you so much.
Thank you. President Lam, that does conclude virtual public comment for this item.
Thank you. Thank you to the public for your comments. So now, just shifting to discussion amongst board members, we currently do have a motion that, on the floor, presented by Commissioner Matamidi. And do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I'd like to now invite discussion, both either on the motion or overall on comments to the updated rules and operating procedures at the board. And I'd like to start to my left to Commissioner Wiseman Ward.
Pardon me, President Lam. Are you also inviting additional amendments at this time?
Yes. Thank you for that reminder. I know that another commissioner has also, will be bringing forward amendment as well. And I invite commissioners at this time, share that language. Two minutes for this first round, and I'd like to ask Vice President Bogus to help be our timekeeper. Thank you. First, I want to say a big thanks to Chair Matamidi for the incredible work and lifting that has gone into this process. I remember just getting really excited about it, but also feeling like it was very daunting and a lot of work. So I appreciate you, along with Vice President Bogus and Commissioner Sanchez, for shouldering the work that I know we're all going to benefit from. And I look forward to benefiting from it. I know that, I think it was in maybe the second-to-last ad hoc committee meeting, our coach, A.J. Crafthill, mentioned that this is, you know, with the critical pivoting that needs to happen, we should be, expect to be patient with ourselves because these changes don't happen overnight. Although, you know, I think that some of these changes do need to happen overnight. And so I'm wondering when we're asked to be, when we're, if there's an expectation of patience, what does that look like? And maybe this is more of just discussion. What does that look like? Where are things where there is, where we should expect to be gentle with ourselves and others, and where are, what are the pieces where we're not doing what we say we're going to be doing according to these new rules? We need to stop immediately, and there should be accountability. So I'm just wondering if we've thought about what that looks like in terms of this pivot. But I'm really excited about it. I'm particularly excited about getting the agenda much sooner than we normally get it. I think that'll help a lot of us in terms of being able to be engaged in really thoughtful, informative ways. And I think it will also be assistance to the public. So those are my initial thoughts.
Yeah, if it's okay, just for a brief response. Appreciate that. And we'll, we can provide additional follow-up of what you expect, can expect to see immediately and what will take some time. So for example, we're already working on our communication protocols that we've been putting in place, and we'll continue to refine those. But that's been helpful. But then, like, getting the agenda ahead of time, we'll need to phase that in just because some of, you know, particularly around the contracts and some of those areas, is going to take some time to line all of that up. But so we'll, in a follow-up update, identify what's, kind of timeline on some of the different components of this, of these changes. Most should begin immediately, though. That's the big one. Just want to make sure people understand that we're not going to immediately be able to do twelve days in advance. I think we'd be past the deadline almost for next, next meeting.
And then I wanted to add, too, that there's a commitment to do a six-month review after we do make substantive change so we can reflect and modify if necessary if things aren't working or applaud ourselves for what is working well. But, but just to acknowledge that there, there may be modifications that we want to make based upon what we experience as they're implemented.
I'll just want to comment around the timeline implementation to complement what Chair Matamidi and Superintendent Wayne have noted that of the changes of this size and magnitude, our coach and team has recommended or just let us know, generally, will take three to four months to implement. And from Dr. Wayne, expressing for us to be able to monitor ourselves as well, to make sure that we are following through with those pivots and changes. Commissioner Alexander?
Yeah, thank you. It's going to be hard to list all of the good things about this in two minutes, so I won't try. Just, I'll just thank Commissioner Matamidi and Bogus and Sanchez for their work on it. I think, I really think it's going to be good. I also really just want to appreciate the public skepticism because I think that's appropriate. I think we should be held accountable. And the results is what matter. So we can get excited about it, and we're enjoying our excitement about it, which is good. But the results are what matter. And so I think that is, from the public perspective, that's appropriate. And please, hold us accountable. My question, and I don't, I was, I want to potentially offer an amendment, but I guess, actually, before I do that, would love to get an answer to a question because maybe that will clarify my, my understanding. The issue that I was going to, thinking of offering amendment around was on Rule ninety-three-twenty-two, the section on board agenda timeline for regular meetings on bottom of page forty-two, where it requires that at least two board members request for an item to be removed from the consent agenda in order to have a separate discussion and vote on that item. So I, what I had suggested to the committee was that any commissioner be able to do that. And I think my sort of values-based orientation around that was that we're all elected to represent the people of San Francisco, and that we ought to all be able to say, hey, look, this at least deserves two minutes of my time to tell you why I think it's important. And if you don't agree, vote me down, you know, or any of us, right? And I, and I've appreciated divergent points of view on the board, even when I don't agree with someone, being able to really hear that, that voice. So I think that was kind of my values-based orientation there. But I also have like a practical concern, which is I just don't understand how it would work if we get, my understanding is we get the agenda twelve days in advance. Five days in advance, we get the responses to the questions at 5:00 PM. And then by 9:00 AM the following day, we have to say, oh, I want to pull that from consent. But then, only if, only if two of us say that, does it then get removed for a vote. But I guess my, I guess what's confusing to me there is how, so it's sort of random. Like, I say, oh, I have a concern. If it happens, another board member has a concern, then those things, then that gets brought up. That seems a little, it seems like there's no space for deliberation, which I guess is confusing. Because I can't be calling my colleagues, I mean, I'm potentially invited to Brown Act, so I'm like, hey, we need to take this off the agenda, right? So I guess that part was confusing to me. But the second part was, what if one of us just feels, I really want to vote no on that item? I don't even need a discussion, but I want to vote no, but I can't sever it from the consent agenda. Do I have to vote no on the whole consent agenda? So I guess I was just kind of, I don't know if my questions make sense. I guess I just wanted to hear a little bit more about that in terms of how that would work.
Okay, so the idea, so I'm just, I'm reading, it does make sense. Okay, so I'm reading through this. So just, just to walk it through. So we've got twelve days before the board meeting. The agenda is posted with draft documents for the public to see, for the board to see. Then eight days before the board meeting, so after four days, the board members are given four days to submit questions about the agenda items to the superintendent. And then subsequent three days, the superintendent, that will then create a Q and A document of responses to board member questions, which, by the way, will not have board member names or anything like that. So just in case the public is aware. So, yeah, so at that point, you would, you would have until 9:00 AM the next morning to say, like, I want to sever. Like, I reviewed the Q and A documents, and I am not comfortable with the consent agenda. That said, in between, I want to recognize that in between, that's a lot of days. So if you're waiting until, if there's been a Q and A going back and the public has had eight days to reach out or to express concerns, to email the board, or to otherwise flag an issue, that's a lot of time for an issue to be identified to a board member as a concern to pull from the consent agenda. So while the Q and A document may not be available until 5:00 PM the night before. So while the Q and A document may not be available until 5:00 PM the night before, there's certainly been like over a week of lead up for a board member to have something flagged that I know that this is a concern to me, which is certainly different than the world we live in today. And so, yeah, so I guess, you know, and the two member threshold is pretty low, in my opinion. We actually had it started at three. But I will would the committee members like to weigh in or Matt would or Commissioner Alexander, would you like?
Well, can I just ask a follow up? So so then what if, okay, so let's use an example. Let's say that I still have the concern. Nobody else brought it up. Then what if I want to vote no on that item? What do I do?
We actually did not discuss that, I don't think.
I think what would happen is then you'd be able to make a motion to sever it at the board. And then we would be able to vote on that collectively. Am I mistaken on that?
Could you make an amended motion to approve the consent agenda? But oh, no, I guess and vote no and say, yeah, how would that be? Like, could it could some amended motion without severing it work?
So I think Commissioner Sanchez is right that that specific scenario wasn't discussed. But I think Vice President Bogus, what you were starting, I'm going to read your mind, what you were starting to say is that you could make a motion to sever it. And if a majority of the board agreed to sever, then the item would move to the next regular meeting. There would be no vote separately at that meeting.
So I could so if so if one and again, it could be any of us. But if one board member objected, I could say, hey, I raised this. I guess no one else did because it hasn't been severed. I want to make a motion now to table it to the next meeting. That would be allowable, according to what we.
That's right.
And so then we could discuss that motion. I'd have my minute to make my case. So it so it would in effect allow that. That's my concern. I just didn't want to I didn't want to squash any discussion. If a board member really felt strongly about something, I just wanted to preserve that. That was my intention. So I think if that's allowable, then then the solution would be if I convinced you all, we would table it to the next meeting.
Correct. So we would not it wouldn't be to sever for to move on it at that particular meeting. There would presumably you'd want staff to prepare, et cetera. So yes, it would be tabled for the next meeting.
Great. Well, that addresses my concern then. So I will not propose an amendment. I was just.
I'm sorry, Vice President Bogus. I just want to I'm channeling AJ for a minute. I think what he would say is that you would have your minute or whatever the president allows you to make your case. But there would not be board discussion at that point absent a second. And then a discussion might happen in to table it. So just.
Yeah, and I appreciate that absolutely. And I appreciate that we don't want lots of extraneous discussion or someone trying to hold up the meeting. Really, I honestly do value when when folks bring up contrary and points of view sometimes. And I just didn't want to totally shut down that space. I think sometimes we things get noticed or brought up. It's happened to me where a colleague has raised something in a meeting that I hadn't considered before. And I want to make sure that that space is there that so it doesn't need to be lengthy. That was yeah, no, I appreciate that.
Just I think to add one more thing that you brought up, Commissioner Alexander, it does seem that the desire of the committee is not to have one board member act alone in these efforts too. So I would just say, I think it is intentional that it ended up not being one. But I do think that at least amongst the committee, it was a split decision. I think we're open to reexamine it based on how it goes to see if we need to make that adjustment. But I think we felt that this was the best place for us to start out by not having an individual board member kind of have that power in isolation.
Thank you. Just wanted to give a big shout out to my colleagues on the committee, especially the Chair of the Committee for all the organization effort, meeting, the deliverables and the timeline, as well as a big shout out to AJ, who I see is in the audience virtually. So thank you, AJ. This, I think, is going to radically change our board meetings for the better. I don't think any of us enjoy eight hour, nine hour board meetings and having closed session at the end at midnight. So just on that alone, it's greatly improve, I think, how we behave and how we operate as a board. So I really want to thank the board for this.
Student delegates.
I just want to start off by saying that as somebody who often attended board meetings prior to being on the board, I really appreciate a more robust record of questions and answers by commissioners and presenters in meetings. Because I know when you miss a meeting or you have to leave early because you have school or work, whatever, there are often questions that are brought up by the commissioners that you may have yourself that it's hard to find a record of the answer. And so unless it's covered by a journalist, it's kind of impossible to understand what the district is keeping constituents conform. That's really helpful. And I also believe that better practices of board interaction and a focus on professional conduct in meetings will hopefully open up more space for students to feel comfortable sharing their thoughts in meetings. Because I do know, given adult behavior, a lot of students have felt uncomfortable coming to meetings, even virtually to voice their concerns for fear of ridicule. I must share my concerns, though, surrounding the pause on resolutions because historically resolutions have been the main way that student delegates and the Student Advisory Council as a whole have been able to make meaningful action to implement student priorities. And so I'm not opposed to the idea of limiting resolutions in favor of amending board rules. But I do believe there needs to be quite a bit more clarity provided to Isabel and I as student delegates, as well as to our staff member, Mary Kate, and to the SAC as to how we should move forward with writing resolutions and pushing for legislation since we can't work on resolutions. And whilst it may not be intentional, I do believe that if we are limiting resolutions without giving us an alternative way to push forward legislation, it could limit student involvement. So those are my concerns.
I would also like to appreciate the work of the Ad Hoc Committee for their commitment to student outcomes, better transparency and ensuring accountability. I also really appreciate the agenda being shared earlier. I would also like some clarification on suspending all new resolutions from being introduced. This would also extend to the Student Advisory Council and any resolutions we have currently in the works, right? I would like to highlight that this will halt student voice and any resolution students are currently working on in light of last year's events, for example. Resolutions are the Student Advisory Council and Student Delegate Kenoshita's and I main form of voicing concerns to the school district. And pausing this access will limit student opinion and input on district matters and issues facing individual schools and student bodies.
Do you want to speak first, or? Yeah, oh.
I was just I was just going to say, this is talking about board resolutions. And to my earlier, when I was introducing, there's been the desire is for the district to do the work. We don't direct staff on the board. And the fact that the Student Advisory Committee and Council or Council has been having to work with the board to get resolution to district operations and district administration is highly problematic, in my opinion. And so I would I would ask the superintendent to respond as to how he is a representative of the district, serving the students, will be supporting the students and supporting student voice into our system and into the decision making of the district itself.
I'm gonna agree and say it's I think it's a yes and and did get to go to your first Student Advisory Council meeting. And I asked the students what they love about the district, what are the challenges they see we face and what they expect from me as a superintendent. And hearing the challenges that you talked about, I do agree with Commissioner Matomedy. Think the challenges you're raising are one that we want to work together with you on how to operationalize a response, right? Because you're living the day to day of school, and so you let us know that. The reason I say yes and those challenges, as we work to resolve them more in real time with with you as student advisors, there may be some implications for policy that I think the student student delegates might want to share. But then I hear you making the distinction that if the student delegates want to share something as, you know, representing the the district that that this could potentially be a forum for that. Because a student as a student resolution rather than a student a resolution with the Student Advisory Committee rather than a board resolution. So I think those are something we can work through. But I agree, like when I heard the issues that you raised, we have some work to do just to we don't want to wait for it to have to go through the whole board process to address, you know, like how complaints from students are are handled and things like that. So with that said, I think where does it I think as a next step, we'll work, you know, we'll work on the Student Advisory Council and I'll learn more about what you've been talking about bringing forward. We'll see what needs to be addressed, what can be addressed operationally. And then if there is like a concrete, and if you have an example now, you can share, but if there's a concrete resolution or something you're bringing forward, I think the board, we can consider, is that falling under the board resolution of like directing staff when that's not how we want to do things? Or is it falling under a policy area that is under the board purview?
I think, oh.
So I think in this specific context, Isabel and I are particularly concerned about a resolution regarding sexual violence in schools that we've been working on for the past few months. And the way that we normally have to go through it is obviously we write it. And since we're not official board members, we have to get it co-sponsored by one of the elected board members and then it's presented to the board. And so I guess, again, with the point of clarity, and I think you'd obviously work with Mary Kate so that she can help us understand. But how would we create a resolution that would go through the district, but not the board is kind of my question after your explanation.
May I?
Well, I was just gonna say, I don't know if this is helpful because I've actually been one of the people that have helped sponsor student resolutions in the past. I think there is a distinction between district operations and board policy, right? And I could the topic you just mentioned could have implications to both, right? So one might be, what are our current policies that already exist? And are we implementing them properly, right? Are we actually doing it? That's his job, right? Now, if in the process, we say, hey, you know what, we're missing a policy or our policy doesn't address X, Y, and Z, that might be a board policy. Am I right about this? I mean, I think I think part of what we're trying to do is get clear about what is the role of the board in terms of setting policy for the district? And what is the role of the superintendent and staff and the folks who work in schools in actually implementing those policies? Colleagues, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I I'm trying to articulate my understanding as well.
Vice President Bogus, or Council.
I actually was going to make a comment similar along those lines. It would be very helpful to staff and I think consistent with your new governance model. If the board moved away from resolutions, which stand all by themselves, completely divorced from policy, and instead focused on policy. And so what we can do as staff is help students understand what does our policy say? And if there is a gap, then that's where we should be addressing it, not through a student resolution or a board sponsored resolution, but through looking at policy changes that we enact. And then there's a there's one place that the board speaks through policy, not 107, as the caller said earlier, which I don't know if that's right, but it could be.
I think it's worth to mention that for board members can call for an ad hoc committee and the president can as well. And to tackle these issues. It's not a resolution that acts as a proxy.
Vice President Bogus.
Yeah, I was gonna add to, I think we in my mind, you wouldn't be putting forth any resolutions. We would be putting forward different things that are more solution oriented and that weren't directing the staff with what the solution of the problem is like our resolutions historically does, but really directing the superintendent and his designees to solve the problem that we're identifying and seeing. And his job, his evaluation is dependent on solving those problems. And I think for me, like, that's why we're trying to move away from the resolutions to a certain extent. Because the person who has to develop the plan needs to be the same person who implements the plan. And that is where we've historically, I feel like struggled some with the resolutions. But I do think for us as a board, we're committed to figuring out what this new process looks like for you all. Because it's also brand new for us. And so we're trying to figure out the best way. Right now, kind of like Commissioner Sanchez said, it does seem like our new committee model, which allows us to set committees with set deliverables and punishments for board members if they aren't met, will really help us motivate us to address these things, I think, in more of an effective and timely way that really brings results I think we haven't historically seen with the resolution process.
Go ahead, Commissioner Matomedy, and then going to Commissioners Weissman Ward.
So we had moved off of the like the little the round robin. And so do you want to return to that? Or should we? I'm just asking.
I was gonna try to get us through the first round because I have not given my remarks yet. Yes, that's right. Let's have you finish. Let's go with the round robin still.
Okay, so I'm just gonna because I got to introduce and take up a lot of time. But I just wanted to flag that one of the themes that I'm hearing in your questions and I'm hearing from the public and other commissioners as well is is around a lack of confidence in the district being able to deliver in service of our students and our families and our educators. And that came up during the ad hoc committee in many ways where we would put forward these things and then we'd say, but you know, there has to be processes and procedures and staff designees and phone numbers and individuals that we know that we can work with. And, you know, this, the reason why, you know, as I said, the board has become the venue is because the district hasn't stepped into that space for a very long time. Like it's been, I mean, if you look at our website, it's really hard to get information, whether it's about schools, curriculum, instruction, enrollment systems, org charts. So there's a lot of work that we have to and Superintendent Wayne has to lead and put in place. And we have to support him as a board to get to the place where we can deliver the systems. But as a board, we have to be oriented around supporting that work. And that's what these governance procedures are trying to solve for. So we are not getting in the way of the superintendent and the district doing the work that is their core function of providing basic services around public education and beyond. So that's what I wanted to say. It's like, there's an orientation around the district. 555 is not the district. The school sites are the district. The students are the district. The educators are the district. And everything that you see in this building and the people that sit here need to be operating in service. And that's a different kind of orientation that I have seen in the decade that I've been associated with this district. And I'm really excited about it, but it requires us to do the work.
President Bogus, sorry, we're gonna go. I'm gonna stay disciplined into.
Thank you. I think for me, I would just say, being on the board since January 2021, it's been hard to be on the board and to feel helpless and powerless if so many different things have happened. Knowing that our power in a board as a board member is very limited. I have one seventh of power. And it doesn't allow me to do a lot of the things I might want to do to help address or solve issues in the district. We're very limited in like what we can do and the authority we have as individual commissioners. I think the thing that gives me hope about this process is it's us doing everything that we can to change our behaviors so that we can have a domino effect on the rest of the district to have different results. In my day job, I work at Coleman Advocates for children and youth. And I just think about our members and the struggles that they're having and the fact that they are desperate for help and looking for solutions. I mean, they've been desperate for a long time and they just haven't come yet. And so I think for us, I'm just say for me as a board member, I'm just trying to throw everything I can at the wall to see what will work so we can help these kids and these families and really so that we don't get stuck in the same habits that we've been at before. I think for anyone concerned about the direction we're taking, I want to say, please be concerned, share your concerns so we can talk about them. But just know that we can't keep doing what we've been doing. I mean, that's why we're trying to make such a dramatic change. Because what we've been doing has been failing. The actions the board has taken, the resolutions that we have passed and have not been implemented or fully executed is a failure. And I think for me, I'm tired of failing. And this is our chance to do something different. I mean, it's not a one shot. We definitely are going to go through this one time. And whatever mistakes we make, we hope to learn from them and do it better as we move forward. But I think we just want at least I want folks to know that we are doing this because we are desperate to see things change in the district for the better. I mean, that all students and families can feel the fact that we are on their side. Staff to know that we're doing everything we can to fix these issues.
Right on the mark for two minutes. Thank you. I wanted to address student delegates and what you've raised and absolutely agree how important it is to continue to have a strong student voice in our district, you serving here at the dais with the board. And our coach AJ Cravill has committed to leading a training for students. And then, you know, just again, how much how important it is and thank you for.
you know, just again, how much, how important it is. And thank you for raising your concerns and comments this evening, and certainly working with Superintendent and staff as well around those next steps and ensuring that the clarity around the roles and responsibilities, and also that the concerns that students are bringing forward don't get lost and actually get addressed, either be at the school site level or district-wide. So, wanted to acknowledge that. I think overall, I am excited about this work, just to agree to the comments my colleagues have raised this evening, just really around increasing the accountability and transparency that we as a board recognize the importance of. And that this is going to require us to have, continue to have deeper engagement, because we're going to be held accountable to the outcomes and of our, of student learning and the connectedness of what is happening at our school sites. And then, one other aspect that I'm looking forward to is just greater clarity and following through on those processes and procedures, and how we're being more effective. One thing that we haven't talked about tonight is the self-evaluation of the board. Since I've served on the board since 2019, we have not done that self-evaluation. And if we're expecting our educators, our staff around impact and deliverables, well, certainly then this body needs to hold itself accountable to one another and to the district and the committee that we represent. And that is in the spirit and essence of the values around continuous learning as well, and take knowledge to the public that, again, this will be a pivot. It will take time, but we, this evening, I think you're hearing from this board, our commitment to doing better and doing right for our students and our families. So, again, I wanted to thank Chairman Matomadi, Commissioners, Vice President Bogus, and Sanchez for your work and for the discussion. I will also open up for one final round. I know we've already gone a bit over, but welcome. I know, Commissioner Weisman Ward, you had a comment. Is this a minute? Two minutes. Okay, two minutes. So, I, I think this, this relates to student delegates, your, the, the initial question that you raised, and something that you said, Council, resonated with me about, you know, having, if our goal is to be able to understand the policy and set policy, and to your comment, Commissioner Matomadi, to have Superintendent be doing the work, right? To help, our job is to support him. I think that what that means is, is we need to understand what our role and what our expertise is and what it's not. And to the extent that we have hundreds of resolutions that maybe aren't as well thought out as they should be necessarily, sometimes maybe yes, other times. I think what we've done is, we're not leveraging the expertise that the district, that the district does have in its staff. And I think we have incredible staff doing incredible work with incredible expertise. And one of the problems is the self-fulfilling prophecy that I actually think the board is causing, where we're doing, throwing out all this work, do this resolution, this resolution, this resolution, the staff hasn't necessarily had a whole lot of input in, but then are now tasked with doing this work. So, I really appreciate that we are not going to be doing that, which will allow the staff to focus on the work that they are experts in, that honestly, we are not. And I think that, that the quality of work is going to be much higher, because they're going to have the space to do it without us sending folks off in, you know, random, I don't know, rabbit runs, pigeon holes. I'm not sure what it is, but yeah, I just wanted to add that. Any additional comments? Okay. I, again, want to acknowledge and thank A.J. Kravol and his team for his expert facilitation and for helping us through this process, and really excited about, and how we've translated those conversations into what we have before us tonight, our revised procedures and policies. And also to acknowledge that, that existing committees and public comment are not addressed within this current recommendations, but I will foreshadow some next steps, too. So, so at this time, I'm going to conclude our discussion with the motion currently on the table, seconded by Vice President Bogus. Commissioner Matomadi, can you repeat that motion? Just been, it's been about 30 minutes since we first began.
So, this is the amendment?
So, it is to, it's adding one sentence to Section 9100 on page 16, which would just add, "The board, by two-thirds approval, may choose to nominate and elect board leadership in one meeting."
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Actually, there's a second sentence. It says, "Otherwise, it is done over two meetings with nomination at the first and vote at the second."
Thank you. So, that's with the amendment for?
With the amendment. Roll call.
Yes, please.
Student Delegate Hanson?
Yes.
Student Delegate Konosta?
Yes.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Vice President Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Xu? Commissioner Matomadi?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisman Ward?
Yes.
President Lamb?
Yes.
Six eyes.
Thank you.
I just want to chime in, now that this is approved. And first, appreciate the-
That was just the amendment.
Oh, that was just the amendment.
Not for the overall rules. Student Delegate Hanson?
Yes.
Student Delegate Konosta?
Yes.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Vice President Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Xu? Commissioner Matomadi?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisman Ward?
Yes.
President Lamb?
Yes.
Six eyes.
Go ahead, Dr. Wean.
Thank you. Now, I'm going to see, well, first of all, I want to appreciate the work, like everybody else, echo and appreciate the work that's, that's done here. And I think building on what Commissioner Weisman Ward said, this is much about our operating procedures as, as it is about being clear on our roles and responsibilities, and recognizing we have, we each have, we have distinct roles, but they're all important to work together on what we're, we're, on achieving our student outcomes, right? Because that's what it's about. So, and I think when, when Commissioner Matomadi, you talked about where we're oriented, that we want to be oriented on those student outcomes. That's what we try to do, but this explicitly, you know, holds the board accountable to doing that first, that then we'll do, what you're saying, holding staff accountable as well. And so, then I just want to be clear on our next steps with this. So, we're going to first communicate about these changes. And then, staff will put together a timeline for when we will be implementing the 12-day advance, publishing the draft 12 days in advance. And then, we'll also clarify the immediate implementation, what's immediately implemented versus where, where we're going. And then, we do have that important six-month check-in, so there's time. And then, lastly, we have the offer of training for the Student Advisory Committee. And then, I do appreciate the way you framed it, Commissioner Alexander, because I think some of what I heard you share at that meeting was operational, and then it sounds like there are some potential policy issues. So, we'll work together on that in the Student Advisory Council. Did I miss any next steps?
Yes. Again, in recognizing that public comment and committees, existing committees were not addressed in the current policies and procedures that were amended and approved this evening, however, that we are going to, in, the board is going into community, and so it's the Superintendent around community engagements, town halls, and learning, and listening and learning, as well as honing in on that feedback and gathering about the communities around the district's priorities. So, once those have concluded for next steps, please expect the re-establishment of an Ad-Hoc Committee to continue the work and into, in order to move forward around those outstanding items that were not addressed in this current amendments of the policies. So, we'll go, that will, that concludes. Again, thank you again to the Ad-Hoc Committee for your work. At this time, we will move to Item J, Special Order of Business, SFUSD's Initial Proposals to United Educators of San Francisco. I'd like to ask for motion in a second.
So, move, second?
Thank you. Like to call in Superintendent?
Yes, so previously, we heard the sunshine from U.E. about the intent to negotiate, and this is ours as well. And negotiations will be able to begin after this, after this board meeting. If there's anything staff wants to add, but it's the process we go through, just so the public is aware that we are negotiating.
Is there public comment?
There are none in person.
Please raise your hand if you care to share your public comment on this item. Can we please have that repeated?
Buenas noches. Por favor levante su mano si desea añadir un comentario público. Gracias.
Hola, hola. If you're ready to go to the bottom, eh, how much you want? You can do what, so I'll probably do what, my family, he wants to go, thank you.
Hi, Tom, again. Yeah, I'm a parent and teacher in the district. I just hope when negotiations begin, it doesn't become this all war against not just teachers, because I'm, as a teacher, it's not just about me, it's about paraprofessionals, about security guards, it's about secretaries, right? School staff don't get dragged through the mud again and again. So, just keep that in mind when you're bashing people online and school staff. We are there day in and day out to help support, so please consider that. Thank you.
Tom, can you say your last name, please?
Anderson.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other hands, that concludes the public comment for this item.
Thank you. Any comments from board members? Superintendent? Okay, we will take roll call vote on the proposal.
Student Delegate Hanson?
Yes.
Student Delegate Konosta?
Yes.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Vice President Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Xu? Commissioner Matomadi?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisman Ward?
Yes.
President Lamb?
Yes.
Six eyes.
Thank you. Item K, Board Members' Reports. Report from standing committees. We heard from the Ad-Hoc Committee. Report from board delegates to membership organizations. Seeing none. Any other board reports from board members? And wanted note for Agenda L, Other Informational Items. Posted on Board Docs is the initial proposal from Service Employees International Union, Local 1021. And that proposal is, again, posted on Board Docs, as well as initial proposal from United Educators of San Francisco. That is also posted under Agenda I, or, excuse me, L, Other Informational Items. From Memorial and German, none tonight. And at this time, we are going to return to closed session. So, we will recess.